Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, June 25th. This is the regular meeting. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the June 11, 2019 regular meeting?
So moved.
So moved.
Discussion, corrections, um, all those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have an opportunity for public comment.
Yes, please speak also.
Try, I'm sorry, I'll try. I know you're talking to me, I know. No, I just know, it's my reality.
Well, I'll speak up for Cruchet.
I'll try, I'll try.
All right. Okay, so we're gonna start with an update on the 2018-19 New York State Legislative Session.
Okay, I placed in your packet a, uh, a letter from, and you recall back in, I guess it was early fall, we had had a discussion here about participating in the Little Intimidation Coalition, which is a, uh, I can't say it, but I don't know how to put it, a lobby group that, that provides services to a lot of school districts in Westchester County and Putnam County and, and now into Dutchess County. And they've been giving us information, you know, on a running basis throughout the year, but this is something that they provided to all the members of school districts at the end of the session. So this, this just outlines some of the things that, uh, you know, were, were approved and weren't acted on. Uh, I think, uh, for, for us, and there's a follow-up document, um, I think one of the most significant things that was acted on the legislature, or the biggest changes perhaps, if you wanna say it that way, is the, uh, enactment of legislation to eliminate the religious exemption for mandated, uh, exemptions, uh, to vaccinations to attend school. I mean, that is, that is a big change, uh, as you probably saw on our website, our social media, we've already put that word out there. Uh, we'll also, after we have one more discussion, our administrative meeting Thursday, it's our intent to send a letter specifically to each parent of a child who is currently here on a religious exemption, to let them know personally, this is the change, this is what it means, um, so that, you know, you can't just count on a web posting or a Facebook thing to inform people. So, we will be doing that as well. We already did send out an email blast to everybody. Again, you can't 100% be sure that everybody who should've gotten that, opened that email or read that email, but I think we've done, I think a number of things already to get that word out, but we will be sending a letter to those specific parents about the change of the law, and they have to figure out what that means for their, their child. So, that, that's a big change.
Can I just discuss how many students you think are impacted in the district?
Um, yeah, I mean, I'd love to just throw a number off the top of my head. I would say probably across, across the district, you know, K-12, conservatively, probably at least 20-plus. Uh, now, a, a number of them are from the same families, so, there are fewer families when you talk about the division of kids, so you got three kids in the school. So, uh, but I'd say conservatively, it's probably at least 20-ish currently, and I think that, parenthetically, I think that trend has been growing a bit over the last few years. There were far fewer, say, 15 years ago, so that's kinda ramped up gradually, uh, and it'd be interesting to see what the, you know, the response is, whether more parents decide to homeschool their kids because they don't wanna have to vaccinate their kids in compliance with the health law. And I, you know, just also reiterate for people who may be listening to this on our YouTube channel or reading about it in the, in the free minute, this, this is state law, this is not a school district policy or regulation, uh, this is, this is across the state, so it's...
The Cans are doing it as well this year.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, yeah, well, just, just in case people are listening, generally though, it's just for people that have religious exemptions that can no longer have a religious exemption. It's not for anyone with a medical exemption.
That's correct.
And then, is the time, it's about 30 days before school starts they have to have, is that generally, like, so, pretty soon, like...
It's laid out pretty well in this letter from our...
So, it's pretty soon though that people have, you know, need to be making appointments?
Yeah, which is why we got that information out, you know, shortly after, uh, we got information from our, from our lead counsel. But yeah, you can't sit around and wait until the day before school starts to decide you're gonna be compliant.
And are new kindergarten families coming in, were they made aware and stuff?
Well, that's, that, that's a good point. They, they, everyone who, in addition to the ones who currently have a religious exemption, we should send a letter specifically to the ones who have registered or will be registering, you know, between now and, uh, middle of all. I mean, it may be a little too late for them if they have, if they're not on top of their, their game by blocking, we'll, we'll figure it out, we'll figure it out. So, good, that's a good point that I, I could share. Um, I mean, you know, I was not by...
I just found the answer for the time mark.
It was not my intent to, like, read off this laundry list of things, not many of you have been following it through this, but emails and such, uh, we did not, to the best of our knowledge, you know, one of the things that school boards across the state were, were not happy about was the legislation to allow, uh, employees to take the three or four hour paid leave for, for voting on every, essentially, on every municipal election, not school district elections, but, you know, today we had a, there was a primaries in some areas, I guess, and, uh, you know, I asked Whitney and, and Tom earlier today, you know, do we have any employees say, "I wanna take my three hours to go vote," and to the best of our knowledge, nobody had, you know, exercised that. Might be a different story, uh, you know, unless the legislation gets overturned sometime down the, hi, it might be a different story for the national election, you know, I'm just, I'm not sure that the, that the, uh, the turnouts for the local, uh, non-instruction are as robust as, we probably won't like them to be in perfect world because we don't need participation in our government, but I think more people tend to vote in the, in the big elections, so we'll see what the future brings. But, I mean, that was, just going back to the list of things that passed or that, that didn't pass, uh, the, uh, the legislation that, uh, uh, would require similar protections for non-instructional staff as teachers have under 3020A did not, did not pass, and again, I think certainly there's, there, there's been a concern about the cost of that process because there still is a concern about the cost, uh, the cost of 3020A on the teacher side of it. You know, they've made some changes to that over the years to make it less burdensome on school districts financially, uh, but, you know, some of the things that we talked about regarding that particular piece of legislation that didn't pass, or at least didn't pass this time around, is that there are, we, we could think of plenty of situations where you really might need to take that person offline immediately, I mean, you wanna pick on bus drivers, and you don't employ bus drivers ourselves, but, you know, a bus driver's accused of doing something, so, you know, there's actually a test to begin with, so, I mean, the more burdensome it is on school districts, uh, the more impactful it is potentially financially on, on local schools. 'Cause that didn't pass, uh, you know, some of these didn't, didn't really address our school district, you know, the legislation to allow school buildings to opt out as polling locations, I mean, it's not our issue, but it is an issue for other school districts in Dutchess County. I know of a number of them who have municipalities using their schools as polling places, and it's become, I think, more of a flashpoint for those school districts with school safety concerns, and people coming into your building, they're not even the parents of your kids, they're people who are coming in to vote in the general election. So, uh, that really wasn't impactful for us, but I know it, it was welcomed by a number of our districts, uh, districts in Dutchess County. So, I mean, you can, uh, approve the increase in the salary that a retiree can earn without penalty, it's been $30,000 for a lo, a lot of years, and now it's very kind of fast, so, uh, that may be an impact on some people and not on others, but for better or for worse that passed, so, anyway, just wanted to kind of bring you up to speed, but the most, I think the most directly impactful for us is the, uh, is the legislation on religious exemptions to immunizations, and just wanna share that we'll be starting to do, and maybe planning to continue to do, and then we'll just carry that on, you know, going forward.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Uh, we're moving on to board goals review.
Okay, so I placed a copy of the board goals in your packet. Um, we have certainly had conversations about that as, as a board superintendent through the, you know, the evaluation process, uh, but we have always put that on our agenda to at least do a, do a, a brief debrief on what's been done, what's been partly done, what we need to do more of, and thinking ahead for those of you who'll be on the board for the coming year, uh, I mean, the question's already been brought to my attention, that from one of you, uh, but, uh, are any of these current board goals goals that we wanna carry over to, into the next year, that we wanna continue? And the, the specific one that was brought to my attention was the board goal on student social emotional wellness, which is not to say that if we don't re-adopt any of these as goals, that we're not gonna do any, you know, we're gonna just stop doing it, but we've had this discussion in our goal-setting meetings in past years that your board, the board goals really do send a message to, to our staff, if no one else, and then hopefully the larger community that this is something we care deeply about, and we know that for a number of this year's goals, these weren't gonna be ones, one of guns, that they're gonna be a long-term commitment to doing them. So just, again, just kind of the backdrop as we quickly debrief on these goals for this year, so.
Anybody have any thoughts? I'm happy to share mine, but I'm not gonna be here, it's okay. Diane?
You can go first if you want.
Oh, okay. I, I would love to see the long-range planning continue, apace.
As well as social and emotional wellness. I think there's been a lot of really great work on those two fronts, I think there's still lots to be done, and, uh, yeah, my, my present, because priorities hold for next year, I, thankfully, we don't need to negotiate any new contracts, so that would be...
We have work on the issue.
[laughing].
It's heat just so warm.
Yeah, that's true.
You're, I would say ask me to, ask me to, I'm having a...
[laughing].
What print?
Because way too happy to be, way too happy to be.
Okay, don't talk about the happiness.
Anyway, I, I hope that the district will continue its goals.
Well, I'm just, I just mentioned, if I can, on item number three, uh, we had, uh, two, uh, excellent, uh, meetings, uh, related to goal number three with, you know, with Ernestine and Megan Marver, we had a second of those two meetings just yesterday afternoon. Uh, the first one we had just with the administrators, uh, because as an administrative team, we were a little bit out of the loop with what was happening across the district. Uh, so that, that helped, that was about five weeks or so, six weeks maybe, ago, and then we had a meeting yesterday with the administrators and with some people, some teachers, some EPS people, who actually have been implementing some of those, uh, activities with kids in all three of our, all three of our schools, and, and the purpose of that, of those two meetings, but especially the second one, was to, uh, to pick the brains of our, of our volunteer parents who've been working with, uh, with us on one level or another. Elroy and Aldo have been doing some work with the Morrisys in our elementary school in their, in their grade, so we, we wanted to try to get a better handle on, on how we might extend, you know, the awareness of mindfulness across the district, you know, at all levels, and, you know, I think this year's pilots, I guess we started, used the word pilot, wasn't, wasn't as appropriate as early adopters, but we, we did a number of things in each building that I think were, were quite effective, and some more effective than others, and I think younger kids tend to latch onto this type of stuff more readily, and you might, you might suspect that older kids may be a little less, I mean, they've been through a lot, and it's not been a lot of that, so, I think it, I think it speaks to the idea of, uh, of implementing these kinds of activities in our elementary school, because that's gonna, that's gonna build a really pretty solid foundation as those kids move through our system. That said, we, we can't just ignore the kids in our high school yet, or our middle school, so it'll, it'll be a little different, it'll look a little different, and, you know, we talked about, um, you know, we talked about training, we wanna be respectful of our volunteers and not just assume they're gonna continue to volunteer their lives away for us, they've been very, very helpful, but we talked about maybe calling on them to help us do some training, uh, one or two of them said, you know, maybe we could do, uh, do like an after-school, you know, six, six days after school over six weeks to, and, you know, you do it for staff members who were really interested in learning, you know, you start, you build support with the early adopters, and then, you know, and, and we also know that it's the kiss of death with any program to direct them to do this, because, you know, uh, you know, a number of them have shut down, even, I think Eric mentioned that, you know, the research he's, he's read, uh, you know, indicates that, you know, maybe within that kind of test, maybe you only get 40 to 16% of your staff by, and even, even under the best circumstances, but, you know, that's 40 to 60% that'll take, instead of having nobody addressing those things, and I think if you do it right, you'll expose all the kids who need some of those techniques to, to cope. So, uh, they were great meetings, I thought, and, uh, I mean, we all left there saying, "All right, now we've got a good foundation to plan other things," and we're doing a lot of things next year in the social emotional wellness realm, already, you know, we've already committed to, you know, expanding second step of the elementary school, we're gonna continue with, uh, the, uh, the program that Alice Coleman did this year in our middle school, we're looking to expand that to perhaps another grade level, and we're gonna start to train, uh, our key staff in the ruler program, which will address high school kids, so, and we got a lot of good things going on, and things that we talked about the other day, I think, will, will help plug some of the holes, you know, just add to the tapestry of things that we're able to get adults to work with kids on, so, uh, but, you know, that's not gonna be done by tomorrow, right? It's not gonna be done by the end of next year, that's something we're gonna, I, I hope the board will make a long-term commitment to, to work on this, whether it's a board goal or not, that it's something that's the right improvement for kids, so, anyway, talked way too much about that.
Steve?
Yeah, I agree, Laura, I think long-range planning is, is definitely has to be continued, I think they'll be deliverable for next year, we've got some things happening over the summer that I think will get us to a little bit more information, and hopefully before budget time. Uh, social emotional wellness for me is, is also important, but it's a lot less measurable, right? You don't really know the effectiveness immediately, it may take several years, so, so I think it's important to keep at the forefront. On the technology continuation goal, you know, I, I think it's been more tactical in nature, I don't think it's really focused on what's the vision for the district over the next three to five years, and, you know, are we gonna do it one-to-one, are we keeping computer labs separate and not integrated to the core? You know, and then on the guidance plan, you know, if you look through their bullet points, and they talk about Framework for 21st Century Learning and International Society for Technology and Education, how does that dovetail into what Steve's done, and how does that get pushed out to the curriculum? Would be very interesting to see how those two pieces can play out.
And just, if I can follow up on that, Steve, just, just to remind the board, uh, Steve Jensen is on our agenda for our July 2nd meeting, so we can, we can have that conversation directly with him at the, at the board table next Tuesday.
Because he's not on the guidance plan committee, right?
No, no, that, they were all PPS people, so, we gotta bring him up to speed on that slice of it as well, that's a great thing, so.
Uh, we, we done? [laughing]. I was gonna say something else, and I was like...
I can raise my hand again, I'm not shy.
[laughing].
Well, he's not interested in, in having us negotiate another contract next year.
It's on the agenda or not, it's gonna happen.
No, you're, no, you're right.
It's only one, so...
I know, I'm just kidding.
I mean, I agree with both of you, when we look at board goals, setting goals, they should be the most important things going on in the district or, you know, with the kids, and I think long-range planning continues to come up in our work, that, you know, if we had this plan, it would make this decision easier, or this, you know, it, it continues to come up, so it has to, you know, I think it's important for the district, we, so it has to be some form of, of a goal. The same thing with social and emotional wellness, it's probably the biggest things our kids are dealing with, and, so, it should be, it should be a board goal, you know, what they'll look like, or, I'm not sure, but I, I agree that both of those have to be, have to be on there, I mean, as much work has been done on them, there's more, there's more to do, so.
Yeah.
But I also wanna say, if, you know, if the staff and the administrators, you know, if they have ideas or things that, you know, we're not thinking about that are also important, you know, be happy for you to bring them to us, I mean, they, they know more than us, so, happy to hear.
Well, I mean, I mean, we got Thursday, so I'll ask them specifically, or, share with them specifically that you've asked for any input they might have, Tom, I imagine they're gonna probably come up with at least some of these same goals, but they may have something different that even I'm not aware of, that I'd be glad to ask them, ask that along too. Parenthetically also, we are meeting on Thursday, July 25th, some of us are, Thursday, July 25th, 7:00 PM in the district office, that's our, that's the date we set for our goals, our goals workshop, so, it's, it's been on the sheets that we've given you of the, you know, the, the upcoming board meetings, I just, since we're talking about goals, that's where we're, that's where we're set. 7:00 PM, district office conference room, all of the other summer board meetings are Bill, Chancellor Livingston Elementary School, and the community, community room there because the, the library will be...
Um, that's fine, were we set on 7:00 PM, or is there a reason we can't meet earlier?
I had said 6:00 or 7:00 PM, just throwing that out there, nobody responded to me one way or the other regarding the time, we can set it any day, any time we want, so...
Yeah, I'm just, you know, sometimes it's gonna take a little bit of time, so...
Make a motion for 6:00.
I'm always happy to go earlier unless it's a problem for someone, so...
Well, let me make this a J, it won't, excuse me, it won't matter to me or the use of the facility, whether it's 6:00 or 7:00.
Yeah.
Maybe we wait till next week, we have our two new board members here, and see if 6:00 is the time of choice, or 5:00, or whatever, I'm...
Noon time.
There's nothing, uh, there's nothing sacred about that time, it's just, as a default, I went with 7:00, because nobody said, "Let's do it around 6:00."
Yeah, the reorg meeting next Tuesday.
But no, it's fine.
And we're not locked in, so...
People could do it on the 9th, the following week, so it's next Tuesday.
Any other comments, Mark?
Yeah, so I'd just say that, um, I'd rather see us continue the goals that we agree have more work to do than try to come up with something new and, um, different, because I think if we were to discontinue a couple of these, they might, even though we planned to continue working on them, I think they would fall, they may fall off the radar, and other parts of the district may not see those on the list and, uh, give them less emphasis, so I'd rather continue with the long-range planning and the social wellness, emotional wellness than move on to something else.
And Mark, I think realistically, you make a good point, realistically, if we had three new goals, then that's gonna be a focus of attention, because those are our goals, so not that you'd, we'd want to stop being attentive to these, but I mean, you can only be attentive to so many priority simultaneous today, and I think, I've been lobbying for years that we keep, yeah, I know, Diane's smiling, that, that we keep our goal choices narrowed so we can really go after them, and the, the larger the number, the more diffused your, your efforts get, your resources, human resources, financial resources, so, and that makes, that makes a lot of sense to me. That's, that's our end.
Since we're all weighing in, I don't have much new to, to say beyond what seems to be fairly consensus, uh, a consensus among us about continuing long-range planning and social emotional wellness, um, I, I do think there's a good chance that we may want, and maybe it's not going to be a board-level goal, but there may be at least one substantive goal that comes out of long-range planning that needs, if it's time-sensitive in implementing, we may need to focus on that, and I would suggest adding...
If I could add something to that, because I, I, I like where you're going there, because the long-range planning, we've looked at enrollment, we've looked at numbers and things of that nature, we haven't looked at the academic program and what it could look like a few years out, whether it be different grade configurations or different programs, we haven't really looked at it academically as to what, what we can do better about it going forward.
Yeah.
I mean, we'll, we'll continue on doing the, the budget, the personnel, enrollment projections, and grade level sizes, and things of that nature, but the academic program itself, what, what could we make it look like? I mean, we have a chance here to, to, to look, to look at it differently, I'm not saying, but just something to, to consider, I mean, if we're gonna go to, out to the public with the, with a different long-range plan, we also gotta look at it academically, what are we, what are we doing?
Well, I think...
We can look at it just number-wise, I, I think it's a chance also to look at it academically.
Well, I think to those points, I can't imagine that you guys would just lift what's here for next year, I mean, the, the language and the nuance of these goals, I think you probably wanna build in as things are, you know, identified, this, these are the next steps, so, and some of those things, Joe, I'm sure will come through in your administrative panels.
Yeah.
Excited, so cheeky. All right, anything else on goals? Personnel committee.
Um, so, we had a meeting with Sue Savas from, I guess, the D-Hick side, I, I mentioned that some other districts use a Medicare Advantage Plan for their retirees as a supplement instead of the school-sponsored PPO plan, so Sue ran us through that, with D-Hick, how that would work, and what that would look like, and whether it's allowable, not allowable, that type of stuff. Um, the problem is that it reduces the premium for them a little bit, but it also increases the premium for the active teachers or whoever the union, the bargaining district is, um, so, it's something that they, they kind of frowned upon doing, but the, uh, plans do are reduced, I said, by about 30%, so they are getting a bit of a rate reduction, there's just some services that are not included that I thought would be a better fit for their retirees through Medicare. Rhinebeck has 87 family and single contracts at a full PPO and seven in EPO-20 on retirement side, so it is something that maybe we could look at doing a workshop or some kind of presentation to kind of educate everybody and look at the differences between the plans, and maybe it helps some people make some decisions. Annie asked to look at two non-represented district position employees, they... They don't think are managerial confidential. We kind of agree with that assessment, so Tom's going to work on the salary schedule placement. And then there's some issues with some bank vacation schedule that has to be looked at as well. Summer aid work in the guidance department due to one of the retirees, they'll need some summer help. We're looking at hiring somebody for 20 days, so we don't have to hire somebody yet over the summer. We don't know if that job should be 10 months, 12 months position, so the summer will give us time to evaluate that.
Any questions? All right. Tom, you want to share the TRS Reserve Fund legislation?
Yeah, sorry, I couldn't be with you last, at the last meeting. So, so what happened in the governor's passage of the budget bill this year, it included and created a, the ability for school districts to create a TRS, Teacher Retirement System Contribution Reserve Fund. There's always been the Employees Retirement System Fund, but this was new. This was the teachers'. So this was new. And just to let you know, we don't have an Employees Retirement System Fund. At least on the financial books, there isn't anything with anything in it. Could something have been created 40 years ago? If not, we got to restate it again, I would think, because it would have been so long ago, it's, it's been lost. There would have been no money in it. Sometimes things, you can create a fund, but you don't fund it. So what this enables you to do is both, whether it be the ERS Fund or the TRS Fund, whatever one you want, it gives you the ability for the school district to put money from your fund balance into these accounts to be able to use them for these particular purposes. Give you an example, the Employees Retirement System is about $450,000 a year, and I think this previous year for the Teacher Retirement System was about $1.3 million. So between both of them, you're talking about $1.8 million. So, and also those are not under the control, meaning the contribution rate that the school district pays is not controlled by the school district. That is controlled by the State Comptroller's Office. And the Teacher Retirement System, they're actually two separate entities. So those are, are, so you're at, so it could go up. There is some protections in the tax cap now, but nowhere close to what it is. So a fund like this could be used to hedge, I don't want to say hedge, it's that, is for a rainy day fund in essence when the contribution rates go up significantly, and you never know. It all depends upon what happens on Wall Street. So if they take a big hit on Wall Street, you can look within the next year or two that they're going to be looking to recoup money from us or through the employer. So you're, you're having to increase your budget, which could go up again. I remember a few years ago, it went up so high that a lot of it was just the tax cap ate it up. That's unfortunate, and this would help hedge against that. So the mechanism to make this work would be you would have to create the ERS Reserve Fund and then create the TRS Reserve Fund. We could create these without funding them at all, so they could be created, and we can fund them at a later time as we see fit. I wouldn't recommend at this time to fund it because I'd rather see us, let's, we're not even back up to the 4%, which is the highest unappropriated fund balance we can carry. But this is a good place to be able to put money. But as you know, we also have an issue on the horizon in the area of taxes. So we have tax surcery reserves, so I would be looking to fund a tax surcery reserve first before I'd be looking to do ERS or TRS reserve funds. You know, so...
I should have the reassessment.
Yeah, and that's what I'm concerned about, is the reassessment coming up and how that's going to affect the school district is, you know, because it can have an effect on us, especially in the first couple of years as, as businesses and homeowners may decide to fight. Don't know where that's going. It all depends upon, it's completely out of the school district's hand as to how that's going to work. So that will be, hopefully, the assessors do a great job in getting everybody assessed correctly, and so we won't have too many issues about that because that is a decrease to your revenue. So as we, so at this time, like I said, we could create these funds, but at this time I wouldn't recommend about, you know, funding them in any, you know, in any, in any monies at this moment. But something to keep, to me, reading through it, it has some limitations about how much it can grow, but you could, in essence, be able to fund an entire year's worth. It would take you a couple, multiple years to get there, but you could get there. And I could see some places that don't know what to do with their money would do that. We're not in that instance yet. We had a pretty good, good year this year, so we'll be adding to the fund balance again this year, but nowhere to the point where I'm like, we need to start funding our reserves. We're, we're getting there. We're looking a lot better than we were a couple of years ago, but we still got a little bit more time to go. Questions?
So would it be your opinion that we should create the reserve fund this year? Isn't that part of the legislation?
Well, you can create it anytime. Once they've created this, we can at any meeting whatsoever do this, you know, create that. But they'd have to be created before we, we could actually fund them. I don't, we're not in a position this year to fund them.
Is there any advantage to creating it?
No, there's not, no. There's no advantage to it, other than we could create it and then nothing ever hands, happens to it, and 30 years later, they're looking to do it again, you know? Like you say, the ERS Reserve Fund could have been created 40, 50 years ago, but it was never funded or it hasn't been funded since I've been here, so I, but it would never hurt, it would never hurt at all to do that. Plus, the other thing too is there are some things about the, you know, like the total, like a yearly amount for this year. If we contributed the max this year, it'd be $240,000 about, and we would, we'd be able to put about $1.2 million in there. But that takes a long time to get to that, and I don't, not suggesting that at all. Not suggesting.
We could certainly discuss in finance about the...
Definitely.
Or not.
And maybe that's what we can do next year in finance. We can go through the various reserves, what, what we currently have in our current reserves, what other reserves are available and what their purposes are, and the pros and cons of some of these. Some, some have some real cons behind it, but some of them are pretty good, like this one here. I actually, this is one reserve that really doesn't have a lot of, of, you know, can't do this, can't do that. You got to replenish it, you know? There's no thing about replenishing it. So that's one of the nice things about this type of reserve is monies don't need to be replenished. So you can save it for the rainy day, use it for the rainy day, but you're not obligated to refund it like some of the repair reserves that we looked at a few years ago. A capital reserve requires voter approval, so this is a nice place to be able to help for a rainy day.
Just, just to clarify my understanding, the note at the top of page two about funding by the 4 June 30 of 2019, that's only for if a district wanted to fund from this year?
From this year, right, correct.
And because you're not recommending that.
Correct. One of the things on what this is basically telling me, we would have to act upon it tonight. I couldn't come back to you on July 2nd now at our reorg meeting and say, I want to do this retroactively to June 30th. Some things you can do, but this is strictly saying, no, this has to be done in the year in which the money's coming from.
Steve?
I think generally, I'm not a fan of having fund balances with zeros in them. I would rather fund it when we have the funds to stick in there. I mean, unless there's a sunset provision where it needs to be created by a certain day to use it, I would say, let's just wait till if and when we have the funds available to see where they should go then.
Tom, I'm glad to hear that you're thinking about the tax, because when I first read this legislation, I thought, yeah, but we've got bigger fish to fry, right?
Yes, yeah, let's get through the next couple of years. Let's get through this change in assessment, and then we can see where we are and move from there.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks, Tom. All right, so we get to evaluate our operational procedures. I just hope everybody's brought all of their thinking around how we did this year and what, what we can do better, what we did well. Anyone have a call?
I thought it was really successful moving to 7:00. I would love to see that continue. And I also thought that moving more things into the action items worked really well.
Consensus agenda.
Yeah, and, sorry, consensus agenda. And, yeah, those would be things I think we did well this year. It didn't have any particular operational issues that, that I thought needed substantial work. You know, an ongoing challenge of how to get input from the public in a way that works for them. I don't know, you know, we've got a lot of opportunities set up, you know, the two public comment times and all the various means for gathering input online and phone calls and whatnot. Yet I feel like there's still something holding people back from speaking their minds, and I don't know how we reach that. Now, that may not necessarily be a, an operational matter for the board, but it could be. If there was something we did systematically different, maybe, maybe we'd get more input, but I don't know what it is.
Well, I think the board copies are a nice opportunity for parents to come and have sort of casual conversation, but it is hard to get people to come out at night, and those things tend to be better, you know, served in the morning, chancellor, and that's usually the, much younger parents, so then you're not really hearing the middle school and high school opinion. But, you know, I hope that those things continue because I think there really are nice casual moments for parents to sort of talk about along their line. You know, we've changed that a little bit. We started out having a pretty open, bring whatever you want, and people didn't really know what to do with that, and then we focused them a little bit more on...
We get the topic.
Yeah. So that may be limiting in some way too, but it might be interesting for communications to think about ways to guide the conversation while keeping it open for, you know, non-agenda specific conversation. I don't know, it'd be worthwhile talking about it, right?
Steve?
Maybe similar, non-operational specific, but I thought the community action committee, the graduate committee worked really well. I think that process was great. I thought Lloyd did a great job moderating that. I don't think the outcomes were really very well thought out. And we saw a little bit more presentations this year from the students. I would love to see even more of that next year.
And we had that all set up. I think we're going to be doing two per building, so you'll have six during the course of the year. Yeah, we'll try to spread them out. Yeah, I agree, I thought those presentations were...
Just to add on, maybe not in this context, but pop, the thought just popped into my head. If, it, it might be something we want to consider having a similar community action committee on social and emotional wellness. That really just popped into my head. Generally, a rule against speaking on things that just popped into my head in a public meeting, so. But it's out there. It's out there nationally.
But Dave, if you could get, on that topic, if you could get people like the ones we had around the table yesterday, it would be fantastic.
That's what I'm thinking.
I mean, people who kind of know what they're talking about and aren't just blue-skying. But, I mean, it's a place for blue-skying, but you got to find, figure out some way to, to salt it with people who have some knowledge of what you're asking, a larger group to talk about. So I, I wouldn't reject the idea out of hand, it's a structured, maybe less than the free-form, hey, if everyone wants to show up and talk about X, show up.
Right. Look, we do know, I mean, there are a lot of very, not, people with specific knowledge in those areas in our community.
Okay.
As, as we're learning, we're happy to step up and help.
Yeah.
Diane? Yeah, I think this student presentation's bright and red. They're going to continue. Two things to consider, when I was first on the board, our committees, when they first met, Lloyd kind of set an agenda for the year, goals, agenda, whatever, things they want to work on. I feel like we've kind of gotten away from that a little bit. Certainly, things come up all the time in committees that have to get added, but I think maybe getting back to that, where you, you know, each committee, what they kind of want to work on for the year, might be a good thing to get back into. Like I said, it will always be interrupted with business of the month, but that might be a good thing to do again. And then the other thing is, I'm wondering, and I don't know, Joe, what you think about this, or how disruptive it would be, but to maybe have a cap on how late on Tuesdays we get new documents. You know, I know a lot of people come from work and get a lot of things, and it's, you know, none of us get here too early before the meeting to go with them, so I, you know, I wouldn't want to not get to something that's important business and we have to, but I'm just wondering if, you know, we could cut it back a little earlier in the day, then I don't know what kind of problem that would cost for you, but...
Well, I, I try to forecast to you, I mean, when I say it's at the pleasure of the board, that means if you don't want to deal with it, just say, too late, we haven't had a chance to look at this stuff. If it's something that I really feel is in the best interest of the district to, to fast-track it because it's waiting another, and it's typically two weeks, you know, waiting another two weeks is really going to hamstring us in some way, I'd be a little more aggressive in saying, I really think we need to do this. But there are plenty of things and things that I sent your way as recently as earlier today that I think it would be good to just clear the decks and be done with it, but if people feel like, no, I'm not interested, somebody speak up and say, not interested. And you have the power as board members to say, no.
Yeah, and I know you're good about if you know something might not come so late, you let us know, like, you know, there'll be something late coming, and so I don't know if it's easier for you to let, you know, your staff and stuff know, like, look, the board wants stuff by, you know, earlier in the day, so...
Yeah, I, I will just say, lots of times, things come up that are pretty important to get done, and I get, I get the email at 4:30.
The dark fiber was a perfect example.
What's that?
The dark fiber thing was a good example.
Yeah, so, I mean, some of the stuff you don't want to let lie. Would it matter if you, if you, I'll give you an example from the next agenda, just to be real, got a dirty about it. Probably wouldn't be a big deal if you didn't declare as excess, you know, a couple dozen boxes of books. You know, we're trying to clear that because we're clearing the whole building out to do the capital project work, but could some of those boxes of books sit in the hallway for another week? Yeah. Would I like to just get them out of here? Yeah, it's not like a help thing. However, if there is some other imperative to declare something surplus because we shouldn't be, it's, it would be dangerous to keep it around or whatever, then I definitely want to get that stuff out of there.
Sure.
You know, we had a discussion quite late today about, about accessing stuff from the chancellor kitchen that's, that's being redone. And, you know, what I want to hear from our construction people and Sheldon is, we have no place to store this stuff. We have other work to do. It's going to be in the way. Well, all right, but I come to you and say, I really think we want to get this stuff out of here. So I, I feel your pain. It makes me crazy when I get something two hours before the end of the day. Sometimes it's kind of necessary, other times it's not. And if it's something that you don't want to deal with, just say, let's not deal with this until next weekend. If we can, I'll say, yes, sure, it's a big deal. And if we can't, I'll say, no, we really should move on this because there's a late or not, there, there's a compelling reason to get it done, so. But I appreciate that. I appreciate your comment.
Well, I totally agree about moving things to the consent agenda. Kudos to Diane, thank you. It really does set things up. I also really appreciated the regular goal updates throughout the year and having sort of a planned, we're going to check in on, on how we're doing with these goals, you know, twice a year, four times a year, whatever. twice a year, four times a year, whatever, but that, that helps keep everybody sort of focused and moving forward. Um, I think the only thing that could tighten our meetings up a little bit more would be, you know, always the, the reading of the minutes and how that happens and how long we take to, to go through our minutes. And, um, so, I don't, you know, I don't.
You need help with that, come see me.
I am guilty of being a host, but, um, um, you know, I think if we can highlight the bullets of the meetings rather than, you know, reading every word of, of every minute, that would be, that would be good. Cause they're, they're available.
And you all get them before the meeting.
We all get them, they are available online for people to read if they want. So, um, I think that would be really great. And, you know, I would also hope that the board, as a board, you know, really takes the time to engage all the voices. And, you know, that everybody sort of has, has and takes the opportunity to voice an opinion or, um, to participate in conversations with the board table, because our conversations are incredibly rich at committee level, but the viewing public doesn't get to see that. And so, it's, um, you know, it's a nice access, like, for our community to see the kinds of discussions that we have and, um, you know, how we try to navigate some of these issues, so, when those opportunities are out there. Collectively, there are more conversations.
Just along the lines of the consent agenda, uh, you know, it's been great to have the meeting get streamlined by putting more things in there, but I'm wondering if we could take out the donations, um, just because I know we always thank the people that donate things, but I think it's nice for them to be publicly recognized when their donation is read out in, in the public meeting, what they're donating, and, and, uh, then we have an opportunity to thank them. It's usually only one or two items during a meeting, so it's not like it's adding many, many agenda items.
No, I agree, I think that would be very nice. And then people know what they're doing.
Because we're reading them.
It's a such. Any other thoughts, comments about our operations? Okay.
Oh, just another thought, I just wanna, um, thank you for, uh, making the change to, um, some garbage saving efforts, um, and, uh, I, I like that, so, I know it doesn't happen magically.
I think we should just thank Woody for doing what she does.
Pretty much everything. All the things.
She's the only reason we keep going. All right, so, you're up next.
All right, so now we get to some lovely party words and party hits. And Diane, I, I forgot, weren't you to do something here?
You were gonna, you were.
I'm gonna agree that, yeah.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, oh, yes, definitely.
There's gonna be performance. This is great.
So, so we, uh, we have a proclamation, and I didn't chosen to read it.
Yes.
Diane's gonna come, Diane chose me to read it.
No, I'm shocked.
You were called to.
But I'm, I'm perfectly fine with that. Okay, so I'll read it. It's not a, uh, it's not a board action, it is a proclamation. Whereas Laura Shulkin served on the Rhinebeck Central School District's Board of Education, and whereas throughout her tenure with the Board of Education, Laura Shulkin has demonstrated an unwavering commitment for the best interests of Rhinebeck Central Schools. And whereas Laura Shulkin has dedicated an immeasurable amount of time and energy working to lead the Rhinebeck Central School District to achieve its place of excellence. And whereas by this proclamation, the Board of Education wishes to formally acknowledge its appreciation to Laura Shulkin for her tireless services to the Rhinebeck School community, now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Education hereby expresses its gratitude to Laura Shulkin for her contribution as a board member of the district. And be it further proclaimed that the Board of Education extends its best wishes to Laura and her future pursuits and endeavors. Signed, Diane Lyons, Board of Education Vice President, and Joseph Phelan Superintendent of Schools.
Thank you.
No, that's our official proclamation, but I just must say, I appreciate over the last six years working with you. Uh, you probably don't know one that is organized as you are, and you brought that to us. And Steve and I, when we're in meetings with you, if we need any document, you know, we'll pretend to look and, not Steve. To look for it and knowing that you'll turn to your binder and you'll have exactly what we need. We, we will miss that, if you wanna leave us, your binders will be.
They won't be shredded.
Everything that you've done for us, for the district, always keeping in mind trying to make Rhinebeck the best version of itself. You'll be missed. And, uh, I guess, do we have a motion to suspend for case?
Well, that, we, we have a, well. Yes, we will have a motion to suspend.
Okay, sorry, I, I'm feeling more than.
We still have other lovely, lovely party hits. So, we, we also have a handsome plaque. Rhinebeck Board of Education Service Award presented to Laura Shulkin in appreciation of her six years of service and dedication to the Rhinebeck Central School District. Has it been only six years?
I've tortured you that long.
Not at all.
It's a science conference years before that.
So, this, this is for you.
Thank you.
And, um, not, not to let any of your colleagues feel like they're out of the mix, we, we have other goodies to, to gift. Now, you, you'll know where your NISBA dues are going. This is a. This, this is a handsome writing instrument set.
Pretty fun.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's lots of goodies here. Um, this, this one's for Diane Lyons Board Mastery Award. I'll pass this down to, to her.
Get to go paint free.
This one's the Board Mastery Award for Lisa Rosenfoss. We'll make sure we get it to Lisa, thank her for her service and coming back and take a licking when it keeps on ticking. Uh, this one is the Board Achievement Award, uh, awarded to, to Steve Jenkins. I'll pass that down if I could. Uh, Board Achievement Award to Jacqueline Savelainen. Send that that way. This is a handsome portfolio for Diane Lyons. Don't ask me what you've done to, uh, to earn all these awards. We also have one for Lisa Rosenfoss. And this is, this is, this is the big daddy of all, or mama, depending on your gender preference. And this is the Board Lifetime Achievement Award to Laura Shulkin.
Wow.
Whoa.
Yeah.
Wow.
Don't say NISBA didn't give you anything.
I totally. That's quite something.
Yeah.
Is that, uh, that's part of the, the hour things?
Yeah, yes, yes, yeah. Yeah, you put it back in.
So, I guess it is time to go, you can't go anywhere.
I've nothing left to learn.
So, I would like to suggest that, that now would be a great time to take a break, get a slice of cake, and come back more places and keep motoring through that consent agenda.
All right, well, I would like to say, despite all of NISBA's gifts, your proclamation is really quite special to me, and the six years that I've spent on this board have meant the greatest to me. And I'm really, really proud of the work that we've done and how well we work together and how, you know, no matter the crazy, harebrained idea, everybody was always wanting to see it. So, I really appreciate that. I will miss these minutes that I have to stay. And all those committee meetings and all of those hour writing minutes. They're open to the public.
And you know, I've been, I've been known to stir the pot once or twice.
That's a good idea.
Thank you.
So, we should, we should pay a motion to.
Do we have a motion to suspend our rules?
For case.
For kick.
Second, second.
All those are favor.
All in favor.
See how much faster a board meeting goes on a sugar rush.
Their construction.
Thank you.
All right, may I have a motion to, uh, come back in regular session? So, move.
Second.
All looking good. That's unanimous, that motion passes. Okay, good news. Been able to send you off. There's a ton of good news.
Well, I'll, I'll start with a roll in here. We found out today that the grant application submitted by Brett King and David Wilton to the, the grant through SUNY Paul's Development Center, Kevin Cahill, uh, was approved.
Great.
Which happened in, in a lot quicker turnaround than the last round when we had submitted an application for a grant for the physics lab. Uh, so, all we're waiting for is something in writing with the specifics of when we're gonna get the money and what we're bringing to the board to, to prove the grant, so, yeah, that was great news.
That's fantastic. What else? Well, I think it's pretty great news that we're on the recognition school list again for district and the high school.
Just the high school.
Just the high school.
Yes, then you would find, it's done by school. All the schools are in good standing. The high school is, uh, they're calling it a recognition school as opposed to a reward school. And it's one of five hundred and thirty-two or something like that, uh, out of the state, and that's out of all the schools in the state, so there are like twenty-five hundred schools across the state, across the state. Yeah.
I think it's also, uh, also good news, uh, I don't know, that, that we were listed as one of the top three schools in Dutchess County.
Yes.
Nish, niche.
That's niche, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Continuing to do wonderful things for our kids.
And I know there's been a lot of amazing end of the year ceremonies, I haven't been at them, but I just know a lot of work goes into them by a lot of people in the district and, and they're appreciated by kids and the, and the parents.
And, and we're graduating a bunch of kids on Saturday.
Yeah.
Is everybody able to go? Yeah, yeah?
Nope, sorry.
Tom's got his own special day. All right, how about old business?
I'll, I'll bring up a couple of things, they're not really business per se, but, uh, anybody going to NISBA conference, July fifteenth is our deadline to, to be at the early bird pricing, so, let Whitney know, please. Uh, also.
You encourage Ben and Jackie.
July first, I don't know.
I do not know.
July fifteenth. I don't know about. Twenty-third, twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth. Thursday, Friday, Saturday, until October. Uh, we'll have to make sure we tell them. Then, if we have an arrival.
I think it's New York City again.
I mean, we sent them the stuff that you guys have been getting.
New York City, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Where is it?
It's in Rochester.
Oh, it's in Rochester.
Just so you know, I'm not sure that it makes any difference one way or the other, it shouldn't certainly. But I will not be going to NISBA this year. We have a family wedding that Friday night, so it's like right in the middle, so.
Who's gonna drive us?
Yeah.
Well, that's why I mentioned it, so, uh, we'll, we'll, Whitney and I will work with you to get you set up.
I'm trying to pull this right into Rochester.
That changes everything.
Sorry, I said.
Best conversations.
Oh, I know, they've been, they've been great conversations and.
Thank goodness they weren't recorded, right? Thank goodness they weren't recorded.
I did make that suggestion, which.
Dinosaur.
Tom, are you gonna wanna go?
I'll look to see if I'm free. I'll look, I'll look, I'll look.
We have a great time.
Well, you're not a member, Tom, but, uh, you can, you can take my membership if you want. But we'll, we'll make whatever arrangements we need to make for however many of you are going. We'll figure it out, I'm just letting you know it won't be the same kind of seamless, uh, transportation thing that you've grown accustomed to.
So, someone has to hold on to the credit card?
That's a whole, well, we'll, we'll work it all out.
Take good care of it, Tom.
And just, just so you know, please don't, this is something you can't unsee, I was telling Whitney today. We're, we're going to a wedding, uh, the, the girl is, uh, on my wife's side of the family, and they're both very Scandinavian, and everybody is supposed to dress like a Viking. I bet you would, and in a weak moment, there may be something posted on there.
We gotta let that beard grow out. We gotta start letting that beard grow out.
She'll have to have something, so, um, anyway, that's, that's where I'll be while you're enjoying J. Rowan at Rochester.
All right, enough of that nonsense.
All right, uh, we have no comment for comments sadly, any other?
Yeah, a couple other things, reminders, there are flyers in your board packets tonight. Uh, NISBA Law Conference, July twenty-third in Latham. Um, Mid Hudson School Study Council, Law Conference, August second, Mount St. Mary's College. The programs for both are in the flyers in your packet, and there's some good stuff there. Uh, I will probably go to, I actually, I will go to the one at Mount St. Mary's. I will not go to the one at Latham because I will be on vacation down in North Carolina that, for part of that week, so, just so you know, but doesn't matter, we get you set up and register you and all, I would not wait too, too late. You know, within the next couple of weeks, you gotta make a decision on that, so. That's, that's all I have under, under other more. Oh, I do have one more.
Yes.
Uh, we, as we do every year, we will be doing shredding early in July. So, if that's stuff that you want shredded, please don't bring it in the day after the shredder's come, because we only do it once. Uh, I don't, I don't have the exact date.
Yeah, we don't know.
But it's, it's early-ish, so.
Can we burn it on the fifth?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I'm sure you'll be able to bring it on the second.
Yeah, it won't be that early, but it could be like the twelfth or something.
Yeah.
If you wait too long, you're Mr. Bo.
That's another question, so on the second, we're meeting at Chancellor, where?
Yes. In the, the community room, which is in the back of the building. We will find out, cause, uh, Whitney and I have to get a little lesson on how to run along the wall of the building and let people in and out. So, I haven't decided yet whether it'll be easier to have people come through the front door or to put some signage up and have them drive around the back and let them in. That way, we'll figure it out. We'll let you know if there'll be signage, but it will be in that community room. They're, they're keeping that opened up for us, so.
Laura, you're gonna have a lot for shredding.
Bring it on.
Yes.
You said August second, Mount St. Mary's?
Yes, yes. That's Newburgh. Newburgh.
Newburgh.
Newburgh, and I, I will more than likely definitely be going, so I mean, I'm happy to park pool with some people on the ride down. Um, I remember that the study council, so I like to support them. I can't go to the law conference in Latham because of a conflict with Bay Lake.
It's not the summer, it's not the law conference, they're too different.
They're both law conferences.
What was the other one?
Bit different one.
The one on August second is Mid Hudson School Study Council. There's a thing in your packet. And yes, and then the one in Latham on July twenty-third, there are other ones around the state, but none that I care to drive that far to personally, but you could if you had a hankering. That's, that's all I have.
All right, and I guess since I forgot to bring this up when we were going through our board operations stuff, um, I had mentioned in an email, we were talking about the MS computer lab, you know, the possibility of discussing public concerns and that policy. So, the policy as it reads, I think, is appropriate, but there's a reality in those policies. So, I am, I'm wondering if there are ways for the board to brainstorm about making it easier, less cumbersome when parents have concerns or anybody from the public has concerns. And bringing those things forward, um, and, and on our side, responding to them differently. Um, you know, I know that we always are saying, well, you know, let's talk to your teacher because they're the expert, they know what's going on in the classroom, and that is absolutely a. appropriate. But, you know, there are things about the policy that, you know, the parent brings it up with the teacher and within two weeks they're going to get an answer. And that seems like a barrier to conversation, to me. So, I don't, I don't have an answer and I don't have really any suggestions, but what I am hoping is that the conversation can start about how to encourage parents, to Jacqueline's point earlier, to come talk to us, not to us, to their teacher, to their principal, to their superintendent, and feel like they're being, their concerns are being addressed rather than, well, we're going to go through a six-month-long process and then we'll let you know what we've come up with. Which is, I think, the reality of how parents feel and probably why they don't come to talk to administrators, the teachers, the whoever.
Well, I would just interject that if that's the way they feel because that's what's happening, that's something I wish they would share with somebody else further up the food chain. And that if that person is you as a board member, that you will share that with me because otherwise, without that information, I'm not able to go back to the building principal and say, hey, this parent talked to whomever, they didn't talk to you, building principal, but they talked to a board member, the board member passed it along to me, that they talked to this teacher the second week in September and they didn't get a response until the last week in October. What's with that? You need to talk to that teacher because that is not cool. And the other thing I would, I would mention, just as a kind of a backdrop to that, for the last couple of years, and the people in the Communications Committee are aware, we did this Talk To Your Teacher campaign that we tried to start every year off with a message, messaging coming from board members, from the building principals, from the superintendent. Talk to your te, let's strengthen that line of communication. And if, if and when a teacher is not responsive to that, then we need to know about it because I'll be the first one to go down to Susan and say, you know how you and Victor came to our meeting that, that day and talked about that and we've been making an effort to do this? Well, this is not happening. So, talk to your people. And, so I think there, I think we need to be more, we need to do something about it, not just, oh, well, they'll never get back to me, so either A, I won't tell anybody or B, I'll tell a board member and then if the board member doesn't pass it down to me, I can't, then it, it's going to keep happening because nothing is, no action's being taken with that teacher. And we're making this point with them every year for the last several. You've got to talk with the parents if you want the parents to talk to you, and most of them do. I'd be lying if I didn't say that I, probably not 100% of our teachers do, but the vast majority do. It only takes one or two poor communicators to give the whole process a bad name. So I want to, I want the opportunity to deal with it.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
So that, that's, I would mention that, especially if we're standing up in front of people as board members, as the superintendent, as building principals, and say, we want you to talk with your kid's teacher, and then they get blown off. I mean, that just, then there's a credibility gap there and we need to know about it so we can address it. If you don't tell me or the building principal, and I'm fine with you passing that along to me, because I'll, I'll push it back down the food chain and tell my principals, you got to talk to this teacher. Pull them in, find out what the deal is. So, and you guys need to help us to, to make that happen.
Right.
No, I agree and I, Diane, well, and I think, you know, there's also that, you know, going to talk to the principal thing, even as adults, adults have that fear. And we've had those conversations too, you know, and the kids are always saying, don't talk to my teacher, just don't make waves, you know, so there are all these other things behind why concerns are brought, are brought, are brought improperly or whatever. But, you know, I think it's, it's not a new problem, it's a problem everywhere, I'm sure. So, you know, it might just be worth having some creative conversations about.
Yeah, no reason not to, I think it's a great idea. But I would, again, and I know I'm, this is my five minutes of being a pain in the neck, but I know how that happens at the parent level, okay? But as board members, you guys know how it shouldn't, how it should and shouldn't work. So, you need to be, if parents are coming to you, you need to be the link back to us to, to help us address an issue. I mean, keeping it under wraps doesn't really resolve the issue.
Yeah, and Mark and I were on committee when we began this policy and it came about, you know, the situation or something, I think, that had us recreate the policy and made some changes. And, you know, and I do believe in the concept and I think, you know, parents should talk with, you know, the teacher or the principal. But, you know, we're elected and we represent people and when they come and tell us things, you know, I also feel like, you know, we vote things in or there's new curriculum or something and, you know, when you, when you hear things, you want to be able to do something with that information to maybe evaluate something working or, you know, to address an issue. And it's hard, you know, the parent doesn't want to go to the teacher or whatever because their kid doesn't want them to. You know, it's difficult and you don't want to just ignore something because they're not following proper procedure. Because it's not about, you know, maybe getting something on the record, it's about, do we have an issue with a curriculum or do we have an issue with anything, you know? And a lot of times it's things that, you know, we've had a hand in, whether we voted on financing something or, you know, something else has come our way. So if, I don't know what the answer is either because it's tough. You just don't want people to bypass, you know, the whole chain of command to come to us, that's not the answer. I mean, the best way to resolve something is initially with the person that the issue is with. I mean, maybe it's just a simple conversation with the teacher and you can resolve it or maybe it's a misunderstanding, but, you know, I think it's hard when we, when people come to us and, you know, I know, I tend to tell them, you know, who to go to, but where is the place where we have that information, to do with when we have that information? That, I think, is where there's a missing piece, you know, on that. Because then, you know, we'll hear a lot of times, you know, have them go to whoever and if they don't want to do that, then what would we do? Just forget it? You know, that's kind of what I struggle with sometimes, what to do there. Like I said, I don't know the answer either. Might be with another conversation, maybe policy looking at this again, you know, I don't know, but it's not an easy answer.
No, and I know you guys, it puts you guys in a potentially awkward situation, but, and again, maybe this isn't the right time to kind of rehash this thing and maybe start in a policy committee and have that discussion, but the bottom line is that resolving those kinds of issues is not your job as a board member.
Right.
Some would you do. You pay me, you pay a building principal, those are the people whose job it is to do that. Your job is to listen to people who talk to you, but if you give parents the idea that you're going to solve this for them, you're just enabling the whole breakdown. And if we don't get, you know, maybe the parent won't go to the teacher, maybe the parent won't go to the building principal, maybe the building, the parent won't come to me. But if the parent goes to you, you've got to turn them back around and say, you know what, I'll tell a building, I'll tell the superintendent, I suggest to talk to, now they may or may not. But once you put it on my plate, and I think there's several places in our board policy book where it addresses that this stuff needs to be shared with the superintendent, then I'm going to feed it that food chain. I'm not just going to ignore a board member when the board member calls me and says, this happened in this class last week or, you know, as much information as you can give me, that's helpful.
Right, and we're not fixing it, right? We have to go to you.
You're not, no, you're not fixing it, but you need to help me and my administrators to fix it. That's, I guess that's the point I'm trying to take, is we need to communicate better. I mean, you know, parent comes up to you in the grocery store and starts, yeah, I can help you with that situation, you can't just blow them off, no, it's not my, that's not my job, I don't deal with that. No, of course you can't. You need, you need to be empathetic, but don't give them the impression that you're going to fix the problem. Tell them you're going to pass it along to whomever. And probably the most practical would be pass it along to me. Because I don't want administrators start getting calls from board members saying, hey, I got this complaint over the broccoli in Stop &amp; Shop the other day, you need to do something about it. That's, that's not helping.
Would it be appropriate if, you know, a parent came to us with some concern and then they said, okay, you know, I can pass it on to the superintendent? Can I use your name? Or if they have follow-up questions, they can reject you. So, kind of, you know, you tell you and then you can even determine what has to happen and then you have their name changed back out to them if you need to.
I think it's totally appropriate response from the board.
I mean, I think it's something we really need to look at. I mean, I think, you know, social media has really changed things as well. We find things that way too, and what do we do with that? My gray area is really on, as Diane said, things that we've approved, like a new curriculum that's gone in and what's been the oversight and observations of that curriculum and how do we know that that part is the piece that's missing versus the reception that the parent has? So, to me, it's not always black and white like that. I think there are, is a lot of gray, especially around new curriculum and things that we were, you know, putting into place and, you know, kind of just approved. So, you know, I don't know, I don't really have an answer either way, but I think there are exceptions and things that would work differently than a policy all the time. Not sure how we address that.
Well, I think you have, you have a committee that, whose job it is to address issues of policy, so we got something else to do.
Yeah, let's reach out to some other cohorts and see what they're doing.
Sure.
And, you know, it could be a multiprogram approach, right? Communications could also take on, try and, you know, solicit more from parents to go the right route.
No, I think it's a good conversation to have in a bunch of different contexts, so let's, let's do that.
Okay. Is there anyone who would like to remove anything from the consent agenda? All right, may I?
Excuse me, before you go further, do I make an observation to you, depending on which thing you're looking at? We have moved the prior 6.1.9 and made it 6.7 at Diane's request. And this 6.1.9 is a new 6.1.9, just so everybody gets what they're approving, if you approve the consent agenda.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of Karen Kepler to the position of elementary teacher for a four-year probationary period assigned to Chancellor Livingston Elementary School effective September 1st, 2019, in the tenure area of elementary, at a salary of Step 1 MA plus $30,648 in accordance with the RTA's salary schedule for 2019-20, pending final processing of this Kepler's teacher certification by the New York State Education Department.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
I would just want to point out that that last section here, the pending final processing, she has all of her requirements met, part of what you have to do now to get certified as a teacher is you have to take these TAP tests. So she's taken the tests, but she won't get her score until later in the summer. So as soon as she gets her scores, it's, it's going to be done, but God forbid something happens, I don't want to be committed to having hired somebody who is not finally certified, but I have every, I have every belief that she will be. It's not, it's not a big deal, but it's still a piece that is not in her record, so Whitney can tell you that. She trumps the records regularly, so.
So is it an automatic thing if she passes her test and she gets her certificate?
Because she's met all the other, she's met all the other requirements, so that's right.
All right, all those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of Rayle Rover to the position of vocal music teacher for a four-year probationary period assigned to Chancellor Livingston Elementary School effective September 1st, 2019, in the tenure area of music, at a salary of Step 1 MA plus $10,62,125 in accordance with the RTA salary schedule for 2019-20.
So move.
Second.
Any comments, questions? All those, okay.
I just want to comment if I could. First, so Rayle is a graduate of RBC, she can be Rayle Corin, she's a student here, she graduated back in, I think, like 2001 maybe. And she is going to be teaching the, part of the Expanded Second Step Program, which is addressing social-emotional issues at our elementary school. Thing that really jumped out at me, which I'm going to pursue with Brett King, going forward is she's also, she's been teaching in private schools for the last number of years, but she's also been teaching Spanish at, in the city as well as I believe the Kitz and Day School where she is right now. And I like the idea of having a potential Spanish teacher at the elementary school, so I'm just, I'm just mentioning that. We'll see where that goes, but I think there's some great possibilities there.
All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. Motion, may I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of Christine O'Hand to the position of teaching assistant for a four-year probationary period assigned to Chancellor Livingston Elementary School effective September 1st, 2019, in the tenure area of teaching assistant at a salary of Step 1 MA, $61,434 divided by two equals $30,717 in accordance with the RTA salary schedule for 2019-20.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of Lori Malassi as a part-time special education teacher, assigned to provide special education homebound instruction during the summer 2018, on an hourly per day basis at pleasure of the Board of Education, with an effective date of July 1st, 2019, at the rate of $60 per hour in accordance with the RTA salary schedule for 2019-20.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve as a first reading the consideration of modifications to board policy number 5300 registered for the conduct.
Did we give everybody a copy of those, the full, the full policy?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure, okay.
Maybe so.
Yeah. Can we just get a motion to get on the table so I can explain some things to you?
So move.
Second.
Okay, great, thank you. So, we had our, our annual Code of Conduct meeting with a variety of stakeholders, parents, teachers, administrators, and sometimes when we're lucky, we'd get students there. We like to have high school students as part of that group because after all, this policy does most directly impact them. And so this, this one was a first for me in that, and I'll look over to Laura Scholinger here, in that the first item, which is the video at the top with cell phones, this was brought up, I'll keep, I'll keep names out of it, this was brought up by a member, excuse my back here, guys, by a member of the teaching staff who's there lobbying either to ban cell phones from study hall for high school students or insert the disclaimer for academic purposes. The discussion was very interesting because it was almost split 50/50. That rarely happens in my experience doing this, it's usually, most everybody is like, yeah, that's my brain. The students were particularly not in favor of this. Two, two, I mean, the committee was about 10, 11 people maybe, okay? Excuse me?
Steve, page 11.
Oh, thanks, no, I'm sorry, guys. Again, I'm giving this to you generally, because I told them that if there was not consensus on any of the ideas that came off the floor, that I would report out to the board what the temperature of the room was, that. the temperature of the room was, that ultimately I would make a recommendation. If the committee was not of consensus opinion on a potential change, then obviously I would have to make a recommendation and ultimately it would be up to the board. Interestingly enough, and nobody prompted them, the kids were talking about issues related to social emotional wellness, about using their phones in the study hall where they're not disturbing anybody else to maybe decompress from a, you know, tough day of exams or to kind of relax before going into an exam. You know, they brought up all of these things related to social emotional wellness. I have to tell you that, at least in part based on the board's goals and the work we started to do with that, it's on my radar. I mean, I'm hearing when kids are saying stuff like that, I'm taking it seriously. I'm not blowing them off. It's just, oh, your kids just want to play Mario on your phone or whatever. But there was clearly a disagreement amongst the committee and I could not come out of that committee with a recommendation on that. My recommendation is to leave it alone. I'm fine with it. I talked with the administrators in the room, including administrators who on the other levels don't even have to deal with this because this only applies to high school students. It's not applied to middle school students. It's not applied to elementary students.
Do the school have a phone to make their study hall?
Now phones.
But they can't have phones?
Correct. That's correct. That's correct. So my recommendation to you would be to leave it as is.
So this hasn't changed?
No.
Okay.
Nope. This is the way it was this past year. This has not changed. I circled it because it's a vote of contention amongst that. Okay?
So before you move on?
Yes.
So in the case where, you know, there are all those mindfulness apps and meditation apps, in the case where a student wants to use their study hall to get on their phone and listen to a meditation thing for 30 minutes to chill before a final or a test or something else, that would be disallowed by this policy?
You know what? I'm not sure that that specific activity would be disallowed and the kids, remember, they're high school kids now. They haven't been through eight years of this coming up through chancellor. I'm not sure if they know what a mindfulness app is. I mean, maybe sure they didn't know. But they did not reference a mindfulness app. They said, you know, the study hall is an opportunity for us to unwind, to wind down. That's helpful for us. We're not disturbing the room. We're not disrupting our peers who are in there doing homework. We feel we should maintain the right to use our phones in study hall. That's, there was no mention of mindfulness apps specifically, whether that would be permitted under the, well, it wouldn't be permitted under the, if the policy were changed. Yes, that's correct.
I'm confused. The way I would read this, that would be permitted under this.
I'm not saying it wouldn't be. The things that the kids were talking about using their phones for in a study hall that they felt was helpful to them would be disallowed if this policy were changed, say, for academic purposes only.
Ah, so the way it stands, they are allowed to use it.
Correct.
Whatever they want to use it for, as long as they're not disturbing somebody in a study hall or at lunch, they can use it.
Yes, and as long as it doesn't violate any other part of the policy.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought this was reading to me that you could only use your phone for academic purposes.
No. That's what they, the recommendation was to put that into this policy.
But that's not.
And the kids were saying, no, that's, you know, kids, that's not fair.
Yeah.
We've been able to do this. It's helpful for us to continue to do this. We don't want that taken away from us.
So the discussion really wasn't about students having cell phones because they're going to watch?
No.
It wasn't about that.
No. Not at all. Yes, and the request was they should be required to use them for academic purposes only.
So it was just the only?
Yeah.
The other 50% wanted it?
Right, that's correct.
Gotcha.
I'm sure enforcing or supervising how they're using it is.
Well, that's a whole other.
Kind of like impossible.
That's a whole other band of worms, but we really didn't even get to how do you enforce this? You start looking at kids' phones to see, that's a whole other problematic.
You and I researching whatever, Brad.
I know, I know.
Also a little concerned about the teachers' express prior permission. I mean, so each teacher could have a different rule for the study halls that they're monitoring or, you know, I think it should be a district-wide decision. I mean, I know from personal experience.
No, that's a clause. Oh, I'll just, sorry.
You know, my kids have been told not to, and then the next day the teacher comes back and says, oh, you're allowed to. I mean, so I think it needs to be more of a district policy for high school, not at a teacher level.
I think that if you're talking middle and high school, I mean, the way I read this, by middle and high school students in the classroom for academic purposes upon the teacher's express prior permission. So in the classroom, it has to be used for academic purposes that are expressed by the teacher, right? But permission given by the teacher. So some teachers may wish to use some sort of app or something, allow their students to use the phone for academic purposes, and some teachers may say, no, I'm not okay with that.
No, but we're talking about while they're in a study hall, not when they're.
No, that's, that, the study hall is separate. The study hall is a separate clause.
That's correct.
So that may not apply.
It needs to be two cents.
Maybe, yeah, there's ambiguity because of the clause. So I think I definitely would support clarifying punctuation and separating.
Well, yeah, I wanted to kind of take the temperature of the board. I want to start changing things and then go back, have to go back to the drawing board. So I mean, I hear everything that people have said. So what I'm saying, and just so we're all clear in terms of the process of doing a first reading and a final reading, is my recommendation is that we not put the for academic purposes only on use of cell phones in study halls for high school students. And I will bifurcate that thing to make that clearer. Okay? Okay. Good suggestions. I appreciate that. The second thing, I'll take it down to F. And again, nothing's changed there either. These are just highlighting the contentious, well, this less contentious than this. This was, this was getting pretty hot and heavy and I, I don't know. I won't say it, but I'll say it later. So there was a, F came up in the context of a situation that had been reported to one of our principals that a staff member had used his or her cellphone to take either a picture or a video of students in the cafeteria. Okay, I mean, there was nothing prurient about what was taken during cafeteria eating lunch and.
Was he taking a picture or the?
No, no. And in fact, they were apparently upset that a member of the staff was taking their picture without their permission, without their knowledge until somebody noticed. And they referenced the policy. Hey, it says that you're not allowed to take pictures, you know, in certain circumstances. So then that morphed into, well, students can't do it, but adults can do it. Like, what's with that double standard? Okay? And so Ed came to me and he said, you know, does our policy prohibit adults from doing things? So he and I sat down, this was weeks ago, and we went through the whole policy and I said, you know what? It's not, it's not really clear. There are statements at the beginning of this policy that address that these are like general guidelines for students, for staff, for visitors, but then when you get into the meat of the policy, everything is about student this, student that. It's very student-centric and it kind of doesn't address adults doing things that this policy prohibits students from doing. So of course, you know, it raises that question, you know, as, I don't know about you guys, I heard this from my parent, you know, I'm your parent, do as I say, not as I do, and we know how far that goes in this day and age and probably for good reason. Because if it's, if a student's prohibited from taking a photo of somebody without their permission, then it's cool for an adult to do that? It seems like a double standard. So that was not specifically the policy, but this generated a question about should this policy be more specific about the fact that this applies to adults, whether they be staff or not staff, as well as to kids?
Because right now, this policy, a parent couldn't go to the concert and video their kid. According to this, you couldn't do it unless Dr. Dowd or whoever said, you may, you know, you may use your camera.
Again, I'm going to want to go back through and read it again more carefully because I think that doing that in a public venue, anybody can do that. You couldn't do it in a classroom because a classroom is not public. A play, a soccer game, that's public. Anybody can go to that. It's not limited to just students or just parents. But I want to go back through, look at that closely. But that's what, like I said, that was what launched the bigger issue about, about parts of the Code of Conduct that apply to kids but apparently don't apply, or it's not clear enough that they apply to adults as well. Steve, you had.
Yeah. Just two questions. One, you know, science night out, for example, where photos are taken and also when community members go into a classroom for, you know, the anatomy class or the principles of engineering class, photos are taken. So what's the rules there?
With this, you can't do it.
Well, I'm going to go back and review this whole photo photography because I know that happens all the time.
Yeah.
And I think in the right context, it's not an issue.
Yeah, but it makes it a gray.
Yeah, no, it makes it gray, but there's a table. Members of the adult staff off the hook for doing stuff that we don't allow kids to do. It's an ancillary issue, no doubt.
Why would they take you a picture?
I don't know.
Like, was it for Twitter, like our account or like, was it, you know?
You know, I could not answer that.
Fresh foods or?
I mean, Ed talked to the teacher, was it the teacher?
Because we get a lot of pictures taken now for our Twitter account.
I, he knows that.
So without stupid issues.
It was, again, it was less the picture-taking than they can do, we can't do it. We're prohibited from doing that, but an adult can do that with impunity? That was really the issue that spun out of this.
You had some good kids on that committee.
What's that?
You had some good kids on that committee.
Well-prepared.
I could mention names to you, I wouldn't, but they're sharp kids and I respected their opinion and I was not, I was not very happy with all of the adult feedback that they were getting. Again, I'm not naming anybody, but actually I had to jump in and defend them a number of times, like, let's respect everybody's opinion, everybody's equal around this table, everybody's entitled to their opinion, but I was here and, well, you know, we're adults and we know better, you know, than, I mean, not saying it exactly that way, but you know what? I've been around kids long enough that I know.
That doesn't work.
You know, well, it definitely doesn't work nowadays and probably never should have worked.
It still works amongst brothers and sisters.
So anyways, I'm going to review this to reflect not only just this part, but the larger policy to reflect more equity about its application to the people who are part of our school community. That's really what it's about, is being a part of our school community. So that's where I'm going. The other teeny tiny thing that's hardly even worth bringing up, that's just part of that, is adding number one to this. And number one in terms of the consequences are a verbal warning. So for whatever reason, our administrators felt that that should at least be a tool in yours.
But does that mean then that you have to start with one?
No, no.
Because that's probably why it wasn't there, because they felt like.
It's situation-specific, so if it's something more egregious that warrants more than just don't do this again, then double it up to two or three or four, yeah. But apparently they've run into some situations where they're pretty innocuous and they felt like, well, the policy tells me I got to do this. Really, this kid just needs a proper un-reshing and that would be.
No slap upside the head?
Okay.
Just a quick question.
Sure.
On page 10.
Yeah.
Is the numbering correct when it goes 10, 11, 12 to 14?
Yeah. Yeah, you got a problem with that?
What's wrong?
No, it is not.
That's where he's breaking the sentences.
That is new math, but.
That's commentary. That makes no sense to me.
We will correct that in the final word. Okay? What I will do is I will bring to you at our next meeting, I'm planning on doing this at the meeting on.
I don't like to get inside of things.
I know. There's too many things that aren't clear. I know, I agree with that. So we can do a second reading and be, hopefully be done with it.
I mean, sorry, Joe.
No, no.
I would just say, while you're on number two slash 13, what's inappropriate? If Madison gives Shay two Tylenol because she's got a headache, is that inappropriate? Well, the drugs, the same one.
What, what page?
Page 10. Number two.
Number two slash 13.
Oh, that was with the numbering, numbering issue. They must be on drugs to number like that.
But what does inappropriate mean there? I mean, again, if Shay were to give Madison.
That is super vague.
Yeah, is that appropriate because she has a headache or is it not appropriate because the nurse has it? You know what I mean?
There's too many gray areas.
It's a lot of gray there.
Yes. I'll take a look at that. And you know, no, thanks for bringing it up because the other thing is that this policy is different from other policies in that we don't, this is not the job of the policy committee. By, well, in regulation, state ed regulations give an annually, an annually pulled together group of stakeholders the right to make recommendations to the board. You don't have to accept a recommendation from a committee or even from board committee. I mean, the board as a whole can do what they feel is right. So you don't have to accept their recommendation. In this case, there wasn't a recommendation and it was split right down the middle. Okay, so obviously then you're in a position of having to make a decision, which is why I have the responsibility to give you a recommendation, which you can take or reject as well, as you all will know. So I'll check on that because you also have at any time a responsibility, a right to say, you know what, there's something in that policy that I don't agree with. We should look at that. We should define it better. So that's good. And this is a dense document.
Oh, my gosh, yeah.
You can imagine what going through this is like. So we'll take a look at that too before next week. Thank you.
I guess, you know, since we just got this, the full code, not that we have to say it before, but at our places tonight, I hope that you guys read through it as soon as it is and raise those questions, those gray areas before your final reading at the.
And we can do one of two things. Either you'll pass them along to me so I can address them before the next meeting or we'll agree as a group, you know what, it's not ready for fun, I will do another reading at the end of July. I mean, it's not the end of the world. I'd rather have it right than quick. So if you have ideas, send them along. I mean, if they're typos and stuff, I'm happy to get them too. But if there are substantive questions or this isn't clear, let me know and I'll do my best to clarify it before next Tuesday, if I can. Okay? Thank you.
All right. All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the 2019-20 course enrollment waivers?
Some more.
Second.
Okay, that's in your packet under 6.1.9, just in case you're trying to track it down. It's the old 6.1.9.
So I don't know if the full discussion of this is for public session. Last time we talked about it.
If you're not going to measure, if you're not going to mention teachers, then it's okay for public session. If you're going to start talking about individual employees, then it's probably not a public session.
Yeah, it's probably a little bit of both, I guess.
Well, then, it's through an executive session.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, some of these plastic sizes are low enough. Yes.
Let's not do it in open session.
So, can I have a motion table?
Sumo.
Second. All those in favor? Table in this, right back. We are tabling 6.7.
And I, I have another issue to bring up to you in executive session that is personally nature, so dump your open session out of there. It was at your table earlier this evening. We'll talk, I, that, I got that about 6:30 this evening. But anyway, I knew it was coming.
So, then, may I have a motion to move into executive session for the purposes of discussing personal person?
Sumo.
Second.
That's unanimous, that motion passes. We are moving.